All right, let's call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand, we'll ask Pastor Little to offer our invocation.
Let's bow our heads together this evening. Thank you, great God, for a wonderful day. Thank you for the rain. Thank you for every blessing. Thank you for keeping us in the past days that we've been through. I believe firmly that many times you keep us from things we never knew anything about it. You were just there to protect us. You were there to help us and we didn't know it. So in case we missed something, thank you for those times as well. But we're grateful for every blessing. We thank you, God, for your kindness and your goodness to us. And now we pray, Lord, for every family in Bowie, Texas. God, would you lay your hand upon us? Every family, every home, every home. God, I pray that you would just manifest your goodness in the lives of every individual in this city. I pray, God, that you would bless this city council, our city leaders. I pray that you give them wisdom tonight, Lord, to do what needs to be done relative to the business of this city tonight. We pray for your grace and your kindness and your mercy. We just ask you to bless everything that takes place here tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, please, gentlemen, in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Case, since I forgot, please silence your phones if they're not silenced. Bert?
I already have.
Okay, just making sure. You don't talk about it tonight. Only item that I have for community interest would be that we will not have a meeting next Monday, which is our first scheduled meeting for the month. The next meeting we will hold as a council will be the 27th, regular time. So at this point, we're gonna move over to the city manager's report.
That was quick. As you can see, I've got the microphone on up. Remember to turn that on, too.
You're two for two so far.
Goodness gracious, I can't believe it. As you can see, Kirk is gonna give us a show and tell on the equipment we have purchased with grant funding and explanation of what other items he's working on. Speaking of grants, I have a nice announcement. This Community Development Block Grant that we applied for last year has been funded, which is unusual. We got funded in the second half of that grant process, which is the second year of it. The grant will be for a new water line on Wichita and Hutchinson Streets on the south side. Other grants that I'm working on are our Texas DOT Sidewalks to Schools Grant that we're applying for, which will be for five-foot-wide sidewalks on Mill Street from Roach all the way to Bowie High School on the south side and from Mill Street on Roach Street across Highway 89 up Lover's Lane to Bowie Elementary. Like I said, that is in process, that just application so far. I'm also working on a RACE grant with the U.S. Department of Transportation for rebuilding the bridge over Rock and Pillar Streets, the bridge on Cooper Street and the bridge on Mill Street. Like I said, both of these grants are still in the application process. Kirk is also writing another solid waste grant where we are applying for a dump trailer. We're in serious need of a dump trailer. It would be great if we get one funded from a grant. I attended the yearly Texas DOT meeting where we offer projects that need to be done. The Mill Street Railroad Bridge is still rated as a high priority project, but Texas DOT does not have enough funds to go around. So as you know, I applied for a federal railroad grant to rebuild the bridge. We still don't have any information about the grant or the project. And I'm sure it's gonna be a good while before we hear anything. The citywide sewer line project is still in design and engineering phase. We should have bidding documents in the next month or two for the first phase of line replacement. I sent an email yesterday to the engineer and asked him for a report on that. The soil investigation and report has been completed. The design survey is also being completed. They're about 50 percent complete on the Nelson and Lamb Street bridges. They still have to design the new storm drain sewer along Mill Street from Houston to Nelson and along Nelson from Mill to the creek. We have the utility relocation design at about 50 percent as well. So a lot of the stuff has been redesigned in a couple of months. We should have bidding project for that. So you can look for that in a couple of months. Jay Evans, Pamela Woods, and I had a meeting with Amaresco, which is the company that guided the replacement of all of our water and electric meters a little over five years ago. We're still making a note payment in the amount of about $355,000 every year until 2030 and a payment to Amaresco of about $10,000 a year for measurement verification of the process until the year 2032. The whole idea of this program was to save the city money by replacing all of the water and electric meters within the city that would read as close to perfect as possible. And with the installation of remote meter reading electronics, we would supposedly save more than enough each year to pay the note and the yearly measurement and verification cost. When the contract was signed, the city chose a great electric meter supplier and a good water meter. But the choice on the meter reading electronics was marginal at best. It was unproven technology and we've had a lot of trouble since then. I've had my doubts about the savings which are guaranteed. So we wanted to meet with Amaresco to discuss what we think about the program. It's a good meeting in that Amaresco is going to try and help us recover money from NextGrid, which is a company that does the water reading technology, electronics. They're going to explain, and we've gotten a letter from them, they're gonna explain to NextGrid that we have not been able to reduce the number of meter readers and that their meter reading electronics is not working as guaranteed. Hopefully, we will recover some of the cost in order to make this a good program as guaranteed. I will keep you informed about the progress toward this goal. Also, just so you'll know about it, we're gonna have to put a new roof on the finance building. We've had problems with that for the last couple of years and the problems keep mounting. So we decided to go ahead and just put a new roof on it at the cost of about $29,000 and change. And it's not insured, it's not storing damage, storing damage, so we're gonna have to bite that bullet. Any questions?
On the Amaresco deal, so is it not, kind of, is the cost not offsetting what we're paying currently? The savings, is that not?
They have not proven it to me.
Okay.
I'm not math whiz. And when they put the program in, they did a audit on all of our water and electric meters and whatnot, which the city paid for at the tune of about $30,000. And so you'll understand where I'm coming from. That audit said that the deal was a good deal. But part of the savings rested on the fact that we wouldn't have to have meter readers and that our old meters were reading at a low percentage rate of what was actually getting used. If we are having any savings right now, it's strictly because the, especially the electric meters are reading at 99.9 something percent accurate. The water meters are reading a lot higher accuracy than what they used to. But the audit that they had depended a lot on all of the savings from the electronic reading of the meters. And I just don't see that as, well, I just put it flat out, we're probably, it's costing us at least $65,000 a year in salaries just for the meter reading, not counting the vehicles, not counting the overhead, not counting the insurance for the employees and things of that nature. So it's probably costing us close to $100,000 a year for those meter readers, which we supposedly, at the start of this process, we'd never have to have. We've not ever not had meter readers. And so I'm somewhat disgusted with it and I'm trying to get, to get NextGrid to help us recover some of those costs because we have, luckily, we have a lifetime guarantee signed by the president of the company. But as Sandy can tell you, I've written a letter to NextGrid to tell them that we need to sit down and have a talk and see what's going on. I'm just not real happy with it, so.
I want to make sure that they understand that part of the report that you gave here was on the Nelson and Mill Street. Because it's not listed on your list on the agenda. But so part of his update here with the engineers was directly related to Nelson and Mill. The slowdown has been, like he said, all the soil tests and everything they had to do. So if people are approaching you wondering why it's still closed, it's not closed permanently. And some people would like to believe that it is. But it's not closed permanently. We're about maybe a month to six weeks out on seeing our first design. And it is our hope that we will replace the Nelson Street and the Lamb Street.
We'll open them both back up.
Those streets back up. But it will be a slow process. So if anybody asks you.
I'm being asked, is it like years down the road or are we looking at?
I don't think we're talking about years. Once we get the design plan, then we can start going from there. But we're a year from groundbreaking to.
No, not groundbreaking.
No, 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 to finish.
We're probably six months away from that.
And then, and then we're good six months after that. So, but I want people to understand, we have no plans of leaving it closed and our ultimate goal is to get both streets reopened.
And that's why I'm applying for the Department of Transportation Grant for Cooper Street and Melton Mill Street and Rock and Pillar Street, so that we don't have to close them down. We're having a lot of trouble keeping Rock and Pillar Streets. We're always having to go over there and fill in, for lack of a better word, sinkholes. And we don't want them getting as bad a shape as Nelson. We closed Nelson because it's kind of dangerous, especially for something as heavy as a school bus. And I'd hate for a school bus to fall in a hole and injure a bunch of kids. And that's why we closed it down, for no other reason than that. And we should have that up and, you know, getting worked on in six months. And a year from now, you know, both streets should be open.
So that's our goal. And I know some of you are getting questions, so I want to make sure that that was out there. Any other questions for Bert on the city manager report? If not, let's move into the consent agenda items. You have minutes from the special and the regular meeting and the write-off for utilities and library. And we also have financial statement on there. They were included in your packet. If you didn't get a chance to go over them completely or if you have questions tomorrow, you're certainly welcome to call and ask Bert to answer any of your questions.
Pamela's here for, if you've got any questions, her tonight.
If we don't have any questions, I will entertain a motion to accept it as presented.
So moved.
Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
Post? Shaw?
Yes.
Gunner?
Aye.
Love?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
And Sprouls?
Aye.
If anybody's got any questions about the financial statement or anything, you can call me or Pamela, and we'll be happy to go through it.
All right. The next item on our list is old business. If anybody has anything, we'll go over old business. If not, we'll move on to new business, which is to accept the annual racial profiling report from Police Chief Guy Green. This is always fun.
So I guess you all have a copy of this, right?
Yes, it's in their packet.
Okay. So really, I mean, everything looks good, nothing looks out of line. We are pretty well in line with our demographic. I don't feel like there's any signs of any racial profiling going on. So if you have any questions or comments about this, I'll be happy to try to answer. I'm sure you don't want me to read this line by line.
No, sir, we don't. But I did.
Yes?
I did, too.
I'm gonna let y'all off the hook this year.
We didn't have any complaints, right?
No, sir, no complaints, no. You're not gonna ask me?
We've had a lot of complaints, but.
Not about racial profiling.
Specifically to this.
No racial profiling complaints.
No racial profiling.
We get complaints every day about something.
The greatest thing they ever invented was car cameras and body cameras for police officers because people get tickets and they didn't think they did it. And we show them the video and, oh, I did do that, didn't I?
We had a complaint today that a particular person had been stopped three times for not using their blinker and they got a ticket the third time. That was the complaint.
It was one click or one work another two times.
Yeah, right.
So how does this match up compared to other, or across the state? Does it, do we compare those kind of things or?
I think it, I didn't actually look at all the other departments. I just compared this to what our normal and what our demographic is with the people that live here. And it's all in line. There's nothing that stands out as an issue.
So I'd entertain a motion to accept the racial profiling report as presented by Chief Green.
Make a motion.
Bates, do I have a second?
Second.
Shaw? Sprouls?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Love? Gunner? Shaw?
Aye.
Let's move way down past this thing. We have some reappointments for the planning and zoning board. First, we'll have to do these individually, but we are considering, do you have anything that you would like to say, Mr. Calibretta?
I just that it's a privilege to serve the city and its council and I'm really thankful for the opportunity.
Thank you. He is first on our list to consider approval of reappointment, Mr. Calibretta. Do I have a motion to accept?
Second.
Gunner, who was the second?
Me.
Sprouls? Shaw?
Yes.
Sprouls?
Yes.
Gunner?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Love?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Our second one on the list is Bradley Summers. I don't believe he's here. Do I have a motion to accept Bradley Summers?
Is this a reappointment?
Yes, it's a reappointment.
Oh, he actually had filled in for somebody.
Okay.
It's his first full appointment.
Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Post, do I have a second?
Second.
Love? Bates?
Aye.
Love?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Gunner?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
And Sprouls?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Calibretta. Please, please tell Mr. Summers we appreciate him, too.
A race should be nice.
Wouldn't it, though? Yeah. Across the board.
I keep telling them that building, but they don't hear.
All right. Next on our agenda is a word of proposal to lease approximately 57 acres of the city of Bowie property located at the old lake. You know where that is.
Yeah, it's behind the dam.
We do this every two years, don't we?
Yeah.
Every two years, we, we only had one bid this year for, for the lease. That information, I think, is also in your packet.
Yeah, it actually ends up being more than two years because you can have, if you read the contract, you can have an extension.
Yeah. It came in a little less this year than what it did last year, but we only had one bid on it. So it wasn't like it was a hard decision or will be a hard decision. So I would entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
We don't, we don't have any liability by doing that, do we? I know what that means for us.
I'm sure we do. I, we have liability on everything we do, but I have talked with this gentleman that's leasing it before. And, you know, he thought we tore down a fence one time, his cows got out. But I couldn't find, I walked fence, I couldn't find any traces of it, so he just left it alone. You've got liability for everything you do, but I don't think there's much liability here.
So the lease would actually go to Cody Carlton. So I would entertain a motion to accept his, his proposal.
So moved.
Mr. Love, do I have a second?
Second.
Shaw? Gunner?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Love?
Aye.
And Shaw?
Aye.
This is a Resolution 2023-6, a resolution authorizing the filing, the filing of a grant application with Nortex for a regional solid waste grant.
We have to have this resolution to file for the grant. So the council, this is the way of informing the council that we'll be responsible for a matching amount, so.
I thought the Nortex was out on the grant writing stuff now.
They're out on the Community Development Block Grant business, but.
Not.
Not, not on the solid waste grant. They've got somebody who works on that now, so.
So basically, what we're telling you is if we get this grant, it'll cost us a little bit of money.
How much, a little bit of money?
Well, the trailers that we've been looking at, gosh, I can't remember. I think they're around $12,000, $13,000, $14,000. So it might cost us, you know, 10 percent of that, which would be, you know, $1,000, $1,400 bucks.
And what, what's our use or need for it yet?
Why do we need a dump trailer?
Yep.
Because everybody that has, drives a big dump truck has to have a CDL. And we only have two CDL people qualified to drive it. And a trailer, a dump trailer, can be pulled by a three-quarter ton pickup and can be used as a dump truck. So that'll enable us to move whatever, need to move trash or whatever, dirt, a lot easier and utilize the employees that are able to do that, so. Stoney was gonna put one in his budget this year and I said, well, let us do a grant for one, so see what we can do, so.
At least try for it, anyway.
So we have two people running with CDL, so correct?
Two or three. I can't remember the exact number.
I thought Stoney said we were down to two.
Yeah, I think he is.
I think we're down to two.
Yeah, because the other would quit.
Yes.
That's right.
So, and there's lots of things they need to move. I mean, everybody from the Water Department, the Street Department, the Electric Department, everybody needs to move something.
Everybody in, in the field crews can use the dump trailer.
Okay.
Right, go ahead.
Well, I left you out. He has lots of stuff to move. Okay, let's entertain a motion to accept this resolution. Someone would like to make a motion to accept this resolution.
Make a motion.
Bates? Second?
Second.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Gunner?
Aye.
Shaw?
Yes.
Love? Post?
Aye.
All right. The next part of this meeting is why all this stuff is in this room. So Kirk, I'm gonna ask you to come to the podium and explain to everybody what this is, how we got it, and how we hope to not have to use it anytime soon.
It's Christmas. Actually, before we do that, I want to do the introduction, since he's been kind enough to join us tonight. About six months ago, the Texas Division of Emergency Management instituted a program called County Liaison Officer. We were one of two counties selected in Nortex region to get a T-DAM officer assigned to the county specifically to assist the county with any emergencies and the paperwork and dealing with FEMA and all of that kind of stuff. A month ago now, maybe? Whit Cross was appointed as our county liaison officer. I don't know why I'm introducing him, because he grew up here, he knows everybody and their brother, even knows Bert. So, but Whit has been very helpful as he's getting his feet on the ground. They're kind of running at a handicap at the moment. They're driving rental cars because T-DAM can't get their new vehicles that they've ordered in. So he changes cars, what, every two weeks? How many times? Yeah. So, but Whit has been very helpful during the last winter weather event, keeping us in touch with T-DAM to let him know what was going on. But I just wanted to make sure you guys were all aware who he was, because if badness happens, his is the smiling face. The person you probably remember from before, Lance Liggett, who was our district coordinator, he got promoted. He's now in charge of recovery for Region Five, which is all of northwest Texas. And he has been replaced with Regan Reiser, who you may have known as well. He was the Texas Forest Service Officer in charge of the wildfire unit in Burke Burnett. And he's been to Montague County many times, helping us out with wildfires. But he is now.
He knows how to use his email.
Yes.
Very well.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, he does. So we've got some new faces, you may be seeing them. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of who they were. Going on to the other items, you haven't seen the 2022 Solid Waste Disposal Grant that we submitted for, $5,000 for a narcotics incinerator. That is him. He doesn't look like $5,000, but that is capable of destroying all of our backlog of narcotics from arrests and forfeitures. So hopefully, we'll get the evidence room cleaned out. Unfortunately, before you can destroy it all, you have to have paperwork signed by the judge who was involved in the case, allowing you to destroy the evidence. Is that gonna be an issue, since some of that stuff is from the 80s? The current judge can sign it, right? Okay.
Well, technically, the district judge signs all of it.
Oh, okay.
Except Class C's. Our judge signs Class C's. We do everything else through the district judge.
But we've got stuff dating back to the 80s. So hopefully, they'll get going. It's also very portable, as you can see, it's built on a dolly. Because it was obtained through a regional grant, we're gonna make it available to other departments in the area. If they have a need for it and they need to borrow it, it's very easy to operate. Takes about 10 pounds of charcoal to pour in it. But that's what it looks like. The ugly drum did not come for $5,000.
That was a donation, you're welcome.
So.
Throw it down the bomb barn.
The 2022 Governor's State Homeland Security Grant, everything's setting out here in the room other than the narcotics incinerator is what, $15,950.58 will get you in a grant. And we initially were trying to get a trailer, they told us no, we couldn't do that. So we went with the portable communications equipment. Prior to this, we had a few things that we had refurbished, but we didn't have a real good way to power any of our radio equipment. If we need to set up a shelter someplace, if we need to set up an incident command post, a staging area, we wanted the portable radio equipment and the power supplies to go with it so that we could go out and set it up. Little did I know that we'd have a 250-acre wildfire the week after some of the equipment came in. And we actually went out and used it at the wildfire and it worked quite well. The lithium ion power stations, which are the two units up on the table between the radios, will power one of those radios for about 40 hours on a single charge. We were running a 110-watt radio with the fire and the battery power was dropping down pretty quick. So we hooked up our 100-watt solar panel onto it and offset what we were losing and were able to keep things going as well. The propane tanks are for the big generator. It is a dual-fuel generator. I hope just to use it always with propane and never with gas, just so we don't have the residue problem in the tank and that kind of thing. The antennas you see around the room go with the radios. But now we have some capabilities to where we can go out and provide assistance outside of the EOC if somebody needs communications. I took these up this afternoon and demonstrated them to the emergency management working group as well. So our adjoining counties would know what was available in case they needed something from us in the way of assistance. The next item is the 2021 FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant, which was for emergency generators. This has been ongoing for quite some time because FEMA is going slow as Christmas. However, I received, well, the grant. However, I received, well, the grant value in two thousand twenty-two, when we submitted the grant application, was for eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for diesel generators to go here at City Hall, the community center, the water treatment plant, the raw water pump station, the high-flow pump station, the wastewater treatment plant, the east side wastewater lift station, and three trailer-mounted generators for the remaining lift stations. It was about eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand then, I'm sure that has gone up significantly. Uh, at that time, the original grant was a seventy-five twenty-five split between the federal government and the city. The federal government changed some legislation and now it has officially been changed to a ninety-ten split. And I got notified by T-DAM to please redo our, some of our paperwork to reflect that as we move forward. So, that, I am very optimistic we're gonna get the grant, and if we do, that just saved us a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, which is wonderful. Uh, I don't have an estimate, though, of when this is gonna be moving forward. Uh, it's gonna be some supply chain issues. FEMA, as of one January, instituted a new Buy America program, the where all the equipment you purchase has to come from the U.S. Thankfully, Caterpillar generators are made in Texas, so hopefully, we won't have any problems with that. But that's where that one stands. In two thousand twenty-two, we also applied for a FEMA residential safe room program, which we were basically the facilitator of residents in the city of Bowie, homeowners, who wanted to purchase a either in-ground storm shelter or a storm shelter that goes in your garage or on your, your porch, uh, up to a maximum of six thousand dollars. FEMA will give you three thousand dollars to offset the cost. Uh, the initial grant application, we were selected and told that, well, we may get around to funding that, we're not sure. We went ahead with T-DAM's assistance and applied via another opportunity and we were awarded the grant. I received a phone call last week on that as well, that we've been approved and will be moving forward. The problem's gonna be the limiting factor of the high cost of steel and concrete right now. The steel ones that go in your garage or on your patio, they are way more expensive than six thousand dollars. So, it's gonna be a matter of, you know, it's gonna be maxed at three thousand, the government will cover. So, it's gonna be interesting to see how many folks will actually wanna go through it. But we've got two years, once we start the grant, we've been approved for twenty of these grants. So, we've got two years for people to make use of those. And what, as soon as we get the word from FEMA that we can move forward, we'll be having some public meetings for people that are interested to find out about them. But that's moving forward. I would really hope that we could get this going before storm season. That was my plan last year, we'll see how it goes. But that is, given the amount of shelters that we've requested, that's a sixty thousand dollar grant, so. Uh, now for the, uh, two thousand twenty-three State Homeland Security Grant, which I will be submitting tomorrow after you vote on the resolution tonight, is we're requesting fifty-five hundred dollars thereabouts, uh, for the city to purchase twelve sets of personal protective equipment for the Office of Emergency Management. One thing that became very obvious when we responded to the fire, and the mayor can attest to this, cause she was sitting there in the smoke, is we were all there in street clothes, and that's not a good plan when you're in the middle of smoke. I have put together is a package of personal protective equipment, hard hats, headlights, um, goggles, safety vests, and fire-resistant coveralls and backpacks to carry it all in. For twelve people, it'll be stored in the EOC. It's not like, because of the variable nature of who would be using it, it's gonna be stored here, it's not going to be issued out. Uh, so it'll be available. We also ran into, after the tornado, both tornadoes, we had VIPs arrive, elected officials who wanted to tour the area. None of them had personal protective equipment and we didn't have anything to put them in. So, this will allow us to have that on hand as well, should something like that come up. So, here in just a moment, you'll get to vote on, on that one as well. Oh, and the last thing, we want to thank Sharon and Derry Edwards, who are the owners of Hilltop Tire. They recently donated six new tires for the trailer setting up back that we're in the process of renovating to use as an emergency management trailer. That was a significant expense, it was eleven hundred and ten dollars for the six tires. So, we are very grateful for them, cause literally, we couldn't have moved the trailer without it. Um, and we're gonna be moving forward with that project as we can. It showed up after the budget year, so nothing is in the budget for that, so we're trying to make do where we can to get some things updated. Has anybody got any questions? Anybody wanna play with toys? No, you can't take the generators home.
After the meeting, they can play with toys, not before.
Thank you, Kirk. And I would like to also extend a, a personal thank you to Sharon and Derry at Hilltop, because I went to just converse with them about our tire needs and he called me at home that very night and said, is there a reason why you would not let me donate these tires? And I went, not that I could think of. So, I'm very appreciative of them and what they do for the city also. Um, we're going to, as time rolls on, there'll be more opportunities for community members to make donations if they want to. So, we're gonna be putting their logos on the trailer as a sign of appreciation. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the resolution that Kirk was talking about. And I'll try and find it, there it is. Resolution two zero two three dash seven, a resolution for grant number four eight zero six eight zero one. Whereas the city finds it in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Bowie, Texas and the Office of Emergency Management, apply for a grant from the Governor's Office of Homeland Security for five thousand dollars to purchase personal protective equipment, hard hats, goggles, headlights, safety vests, fire-resistant coveralls and packs for the city of Bowie Office of Emergency Management, Emergency Operations Center, whereas the city council agrees that in the event of a loss or misuse of the office of the government, Governor's funds, the city council assures that the funds will be returned to the office of the governor in full. And whereas the city council designates the city manager as the grantee's authorized official, the authorized official is given the power to apply for, accept, reject, or alter, or terminate the grant on behalf of the applicant agency. Does, does this have a matching amount? I mean, so this is.
It, well, I take that back. We will have to go in front of a. I will have to go to Nortex and present our proposal in front of the panel of judges there. And they will rank those, just like they did our communications equipment. And hopefully, like we did with the generator, or the incinerator, they came back and said, we're gonna give you five thousand bucks to cover it.
Okay.
They may come back and say, well, we've got X amount of money, we've got X amount of people asking for stuff, we can offer you this amount or we'll pay for it totally. I don't know what the outcome will be.
Okay.
So.
Heads up. All right, so I would entertain a motion to accept the resolution as presented.
And this is just to, to file the grant?
Yes.
So moved.
Shaw? Do I have a second?
A second.
Bates? Gunner?
Aye.
Love?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Shaw?
Yes.
And Bates?
Aye.
All right, with that, the only thing I've left on the agenda is public comments, and I don't see Mildred, so I guess we don't have any tonight. We will tell her she was missed. Uh, we will adjourn the meeting at, where do you have, six thirty-eight. Thank you.